Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
Uh, thank you. I am, I believe, uh, believe Mr. Haley is joining us remote this evening. Is that correct, Mr. Haley?
That's correct, Madam Vice President.
And he has asked me in his stead to conduct this evening's meeting, so, um. Hang on. Thank you. Um, we would obviously like to welcome everybody who's listening tonight, viewing with us here in the audience. Um, a note that, of course, the meeting is being recorded, both video and audio. We've got a visitors' comment section, um, on the agenda. If you'd like to speak to the board, you'll be asked to provide your name, address, and you'll have three minutes to speak. If you're using Zoom and wish to address the board tonight, please use the raise hand feature at the bottom of the app or a window to signal that you would like to address the board during the comment section. There will also be a public comment section after the general manager staff reports. During this section, the public may comment on this evening's presentations. If you are joining the meeting by phone only, please press star nine to address the board in the visitor comment section. If you're attending here in person and would like to speak, please, there's a sign up sheet over by Ms. May, located near the front door. Comments are limited to three minutes, should be directed to the board. These comments are public, as we all know. We would caution you not to disclose confidential account information, account information that's not in your name. The BPU team will provide individual, will not provide, excuse me, individual account information or history in an open meeting. I think folks are aware that they can always call or email BPU with concerns. Tonight's agenda presentations can be found on the BPU website. If you're using Zoom, they'll be on your screen. This is a reminder, as always, this is a business meeting of the Board of Directors. We will conduct the meeting accordingly. Following rules apply to this meeting. Every person in this room and those attending remotely will act respectfully toward one another. Personal attacks and accusations toward any person will not be tolerated. Please state your specific issue to the board only, and we will then determine the BPU team involvement with that. Attendees, please refrain from side discussion or individual commentary that interferes with speakers or other attendees tonight. If the side discussion or other commentary is necessary, please take it outside the boardroom. If any of the above rules are breached during the meeting, that individual is subject to removal from the meeting. My name is Rose Mulvaney Henry, member-at-large, position number three, and I'm the Board Vice President. Other members of our board and team include Jeremy Ash, the General Manager, David Haley, member-at-large, position two, and Board President via Zoom, Tom Groneman, Second District, Stevie Wake, Senior, First District, Brett Parker, Third District, and Board Secretary, Mary Gonzalez, Member-at-large, position number one, and Angela Lawson, our Acting Chief Counsel. Please remember, put your phones on silent, and also a reminder that there are microphones throughout the room. They are extremely sensitive, they can pick up and record any and all comments that are made anywhere in the room. Before we begin our meeting, if you would join me in rising and citing the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which stands one nation, under God, physical, with liberty and justice for all. Angela, can we get a roll call, please?
Roll call, Haley.
Present.
Wakes.
Here.
Mulvaney Henry.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Gonzalez.
Here.
Groneman.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Before I ask for a motion to approve this evening's agenda, I'd ask if there are any comments, revisions need to be made.
Were you gonna ask?
Uh, in fact, I was, thank you, Mr. Groneman. I actually moved to amend this evening's agenda to add at the conclusion of the regular session to add a, an executive, a brief executive session for the board to talk about non-elected personnel matters.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, roll call, please.
It's, it's the motion to approve the amended agenda or just the amendment to the agenda?
How do, do we have to do both? Do we have to do two separate?
Seemed like that said the same thing to me, so I'm not sure.
So you could, you could do it to, to approve the amended, with the amendment?
I move to approve the amended agenda with the amendment.
Can I ask a clarifying question, please?
Yes.
Do you intend to put it is the new number ten before adjourn? Do you want it before or after board comments?
I'd like it after board comments, please.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, roll call, please.
Roll call, Haley.
Aye.
Wakes.
Aye.
Forgot.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Groneman.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Uh, point of order on myself, I would like to amend that amendment that I just made. Only, I don't, I don't want to amend it. I want to ask the board to waive the rule on being able to attend remotely to accommodate Mr. Haley, who was not able to be with us in person tonight, to attend the executive session.
Can we do that in the motion to go into executive session?
You can do it either way, now or then.
We can do it then. Okay. All right, then. Um, okay, back to the actual agenda. I, before I ask for a motion to approve the regular amended agenda with the amendment.
You've done.
I've already done that, I'm sorry, I apologize. Um, okay, before I ask for approval of the minutes of the work session from February five, 2025, I will ask if there are any revisions that need to be made to it?
I move approval of the minutes of the work session.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, roll call, please.
Roll call, Haley.
Aye.
Wakes.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Groneman.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Before I move, ask for a motion for approval of the minutes of the regular session of February five, 2025, I'll ask if there are any revisions that need to be made?
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Roll call, Haley.
Aye.
Wakes.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Groneman.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Thank you. After that very rocky start for me, Mr. Ash, I will turn it over to you, sir.
Thank you. Chris is there, anybody sign him to speak? No? Rob? All right, thank you. Um, no, nobody wishing to speak, either in person or online. With that, we'll move to, um, the team reports, and we have the preliminary December 2024 financials.
Lori, is this your last presentation?
It is.
Wow.
Let's go.
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
Now you can comment all you want, right? So, uh, tonight, I'll be presenting the preliminary, uh, December 2024 financials. Um, so there will not be any vote that's needed. But I will let you know that the statements tonight, um, are preliminary, as we're preparing for the annual audit. Uh, Andrew and his team are preparing for the audit. So that'll be with Forvis Mazars. Uh, it's our auditing firm, which is the same company that we've had in years past. They just are changing their names a little bit more frequently. Um, the audit will begin the week of March 17th. Uh, they'll be doing their audit work for the next four to five weeks remotely. We're still waiting on a few items that will impact both the balance sheet and the income statements. Um, we still are waiting on our, um, uh, actuary report for the, the coal miners OPEB, uh, for Brushy Creek Coal Mine. We still have some miners that are, um, you know, still using that plan. Um, we still look at our accruals as we go through the, into the time period before our auditors show up. So those are payments that are made in 2025 that are really for 2024, so that we can accrue them back to the proper year. And then we review any kind of retainings that we have on any construction contracts. Um, we do have a new accounting standard, uh, GESB one oh one, which relates to absences and just how that's treated and the footnotes associated with that. And we're still working through that with our auditors. So once audit is complete, that we bring back for you the draft of the annual report, probably in around May, and also finalize any monthly or quarterly reports that have been presented during that time. So, looking at our 2024 build, um, electric usage, um, overall, uh, just down 2.2% compared to 2023. Um, residential's been down about 6%, commercial's down about 3%, and we were seeing industrial up about 4%. So, um, you know, when I looked even back at 2023, um, our usage was about 2% as well, so pretty comparable over the last couple of years. Looking at our, uh, water usage, um, so it's just down slightly compared to 2023, down about, uh, 1.1%. Residential down slightly, 1%, commercial even less than 1%, and then our industrial is, uh, down 3%. So, and their water's usage has been comparable to 2023 as well as 2022. Looking at our revenues just for, uh, the month of December, um, you know, we always seem to have some pretty big swings, uh, in there. Um, we look at where we are compared to budget. Um, you know, overall, it shows that we're, um, below budget by about 36%. There's two major items, you know, that occur. Uh, we always have to book our third and fourth quarter, either over or under recovery of our ERC, and, um, we had an over recovery, uh, of about, uh, 9.3, almost 9.4 million. So basically, that reduces revenue, and then we'll recognize, uh, that revenue over the first six months of 2025. The other item that has a big impact is because the BPU is the plan sponsor to the pension plan. Um, their, um, kind of good and bad of their activity through the year flows through our financials. And so, um, it's about a year behind, so we're looking at 23 activity that occurred. And, um, you know, it was a pretty good year for, um, our pension plan during that year, and so we are recognizing, um, basically, the, the positive, we are able to reduce our expense on the pension plan, uh, and that's about $6 million that we're recognizing. So, um, so overall, um, electric is, is down about 41% and water is down about 12%. So, the pension plan affects both the electric and water. Looking at, from a year-to-date perspective, um, you know, we're pretty comparable, uh, less than 1% in comparison to where we were in 2023, and even, uh, we're pretty much break even to budget, uh, in 2024. So, overall, um, revenue's up about 550,000. So our electric is down less than 1% as well as our water is down less than 1%. Um, you know, one, one area that we've seen, you know, some pretty good growth in is our commercial and, and on the electric side, and it's up about 8.2 million, uh, overall. So that's good news, that commercial is growing a little bit, so. Um, on the operating expense side for the month, uh, with the impact of the ERC and also the pension, um, so the impact is reduction of, um, overall expenses by about, um, 36 and a half percent. So about, uh, electric is down about 6.5 million while water is down about 1.9 million. So overall, electric's down 33% while water is down about 55% for the month. Looking at our expenses from a year-to-date, uh, perspective, um, you know, down about 7% compared to 23, down about 6.5% compared to budget of 24. Uh, that translates to about 17.9 million below. Um, electric being down 5% or about 12 million, and water down about, uh, 13%. They're about, uh, 5.8 million. We're looking at our expenses, less depreciation, um, pretty comparable to our budget as well as 2023, that were down about 8.3%. Um, some of the categories there, our purchase power was up this year, about 7.6 million. Our fuel was down about 6.3 million, production down a million and a half, uh, TND about a million nine, and our GNA is down about 10.6, which has the impact of the pension in it. So, water, all their categories are below budget. Um, production being about almost 900,000 below, TND about 2.2 million, and GNA about 2.6. So our change in net position, just for the month, uh, in comparison to budget, we projected to be about a 2.1 million, uh, positive. Overall, uh, we're about 288,000 positive. Um, electric had a little bit of a loss, 1.5 million, while water had a positive 1.8 million. Looking at year-to-date, um, we projected to be overall about 40.9, uh, positive change in net assets, uh, in our budget, and, uh, we show a positive 62.5 million. Uh, 46.3 of that is in the electric side, 16.3 is in the water side. So overall, we're about 21.7 million above our budget. So looking at our tenure graph, um, you know, doesn't change a whole lot, and then the last, you know, three to four years, we've seen our revenues above our expenses there. So with the revenues of about 314 million, our expense is about 268 million. So that represents, on the electric side, the positive, um, change in net assets of about 46 million. And on the water side, um, we've seen, you know, definitely our revenue, um, you know, increasing over the last couple of years. Uh, with water's revenues being about 52, almost 53 million, and expenses about 43, 44 million, uh, their change in net assets represents about 16.3 million. So looking at, um, our average daily collections, um, you know, I've spoke to you about, you know, we're in, when our, we're in our winter period, um, and our revenue's lower. So, um, we have seen our daily collections, uh, go down a little bit. Um, we're also, you know, in our, uh, cold weather period, um, so that impacts collections as, as well. So, you know, overall, through the year, um, we average about 1.8 million, you know, daily in collections. Um, and our, you know, for December, we're about 1.7 million, so it's very comparable to where we were in '22 as well as '23. Uh, our historical, um, monthly cash, um, so for the month of December, you know, we did show a positive of 2 million, um, which is, you know, comparable or not extreme, I mean, the fact that we're positive in December is a good thing. Um, you know, uh, overall, our pause, our years, um, was about 18.6 million. Um, and over the three-year period, um, it does truly predict, um, depict that our, um, strong months are definitely in the summer months of, you know, July through October, so. Um, our cash position, so we were able to raise, um, increase our cash overall, the number of days by seven days, um, with that 2 million. Um, so we're at 130 days at the end of December. Our fuel inventory, um, as you can see there, it's, it's dropped in comparison to where we were a year ago. I'm not going to jinx the plants, plants been running, they've been doing good. But, um, you know, so we're burning down some of that inventory that we've had, uh, that we've had to keep on hand, uh, over the, over this last year. Looking at our historical days of cash, as I said, we're about 130 days. Um, you know, we've had, um, um, a good three, four, uh, five months, uh, with good, good, um, increase in cash, and that's good going in, uh, to the next year. Uh, when you look at our three-year period, um, we had been averaging about 79 days, uh, over the three years, and it did bump up a little bit to 80. When we look at our 12-month, um, average, it's about 98 days. For our capital spending, um, we had a budget of about 67 million, um, we've, uh, spent almost 50 million. Um, you know, there's some of the major projects, uh, below there. Um, I will remind you that there's about $14 million of grants and bonds that were in our budget, uh, that weren't spent. Um, and once you take that in consideration, that leaves about 5% remaining. The grants are put in, uh, have been rolled into the 2025 budget. Uh, the bonds, uh, we, we postponed the bonds in '24, and we don't have any bonds targeted in '25. So, but the grant money, uh, is starting to be spent in '25.
Lori, may I interrupt you there? So on the grant money, um, it, it's been, you said it's been basically moved into the 2025 budget. The projects that the grants were assigned to, the projects remain the same.
Yes.
The grants are not being diverted to any other project, they're still the same projects, they're just continuing ongoing projects.
That is correct.
Thank you.
So, you know, we have a FEMA grant, which is, uh, you know, with our mains and, uh, water lines, and, you know, they, they had some time where they had to bid the project and, and get that going and everything. Uh, we have an EPA grant, which is for our Nierman Water Treatment Plant, and then we have, uh, an EDA grant, uh, for the electric side, uh, for the transmission, uh, line out at, uh, Piper, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, that work, uh, continues.
Thank you.
And the last, uh, slide is our debt coverage. Um, so our financial guidelines target our debt coverage to be two, two times, uh, with pilot, um, and we're at a combined 3.15 times with electric being 2.98 and water being 3.26. Um, and then, uh, as we look at it, uh, without pilot, we're, our guideline is 1.6 times, and so we're at 2.41. So, um, I'm happy to leave the utility with a debt coverage above three. Any questions? Thank you.
I don't have a question, I've got a comment. Um, I'm, oh, uh, David's got his hand raised before he does, I was, um, I've never quite seen you had a spring in your step, um, given the financial report, meaning this is your last one, so. Uh, thank you very much, I appreciate it. Rob, you want to unmute David? Thank you. David?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
And I, you, you kind of took the, uh, the words out of my mouth prior to board comments. I just wanted to say at this last juncture, how informative, insightful, and educational, uh, that, you know, Lori has been, Lori Austin has been to this process, and I, I do, uh, note the spring in her step as well, as well. But very appreciative, and I didn't want to wait until the board comments, uh, to share how instructive and informative and appreciative, uh, her presence has been, and wishing her, um, all the best in that, since this is her last report. And I thank you, uh, Rose, thank you, Madam Vice President, for letting me, uh, interlude.
No problem, Mr. President, thank you.
Not only the spring in her step, but it's the smile on her face. Look at this.
I'm sending good news, that's fine.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Lori. Um, next up, we've got, um, Darren McNew here from Electric Operations Group, and he's gonna give you some information on a lot of the investment we've been making and plan to continue making in the, um, electric system. And, uh, it's a really, really great project. I think, you know, not to probably maybe steal some of what Darren may or may not be gonna talk about, but, um, knock on wood, these couple of weather events we've had this year, um, we've, we've had minimal disruption. So, the, the, the things we're doing, the planting and the, the preventative maintenance on the front side is really paying off with, when it comes to system performance.
Yeah, that was a, excuse me, really good segue. So, as Jeremy said, Darren McNew, Executive Director of Electric Operations. I'm here to talk a little bit about our pole inspection replacement program. Um, so I know you've seen some of this before, but just reminders, this is our program to go through and inspect all the wood poles on our system. Um, and we're inspecting those poles for their overall condition and really their structural integrity. Um, we're targeting a 10-year cycle for this. Um, and this is our 2025, will be our fifth year of the program. And I say cycle because this is a program that will be ongoing. You know, we're gonna get through, hopefully, the whole system and, and targeting 10 years, and then start all the way over, just like we do with our tree trimming. Um, so, and I say targeting because, you know, we are, we are pretty well on track for the inspection part, but, you know, because of the amount of poles that we have to replace, we're gonna be a little bit trailing as far as getting all those, all those done. But that is the goal, and then we expect, you know, the next cycles will go, go faster, and, you know, obviously far less poles to be, um, replaced. And, uh, of course, the whole point of this, as, as Jeremy said, this is preventative maintenance, um, you know, trying to improve our system reliability and, you know, public safety, just make sure all of our poles are, are in good condition. Um, and we're also gonna be, you know, as part of this, extending the life of our existing wood poles. Talk about a little bit more on this next slide, but, um, all the poles, when they're inspected, are treated with a preservative chemical that helps extend the life, um, helps preserve the wood and eliminate wood rot. Um, and so, you know, we're, we're also doing a, a life extension on all of our existing assets. Um, so this next map I thought I'd show, I, I talked about a 10-year cycle, like I said. So this is a map from the American Wood Protection Association. It's actually a, you know, very technical here, biodegradation zone. And so they look at, um, you know, the country, look at things like rainfall, temperature, soil conditions, and then rate sort of, um, the expected deterioration for wood in contact with the ground. So you can see Kansas City there, we're a Zone Three, an intermediate zone. Um, and so RUS, which is the Rural Utility Service, they do a lot of things for utility standards. A lot of our construction is by their standards or are very close to it. And they recommend a 10-year cycle, um, but for Zone Three. So that's kind of how we came to that number, and that cycle is, you know, based on this map and, and those kind of industry standard recommendations. So what we actually do, um, you know, obviously, just the visual inspection of the pole, the excavator around the base, check condition of the wood there at ground level, um, sounding the pole is just hitting it with a hammer, you know, to detect if there's any voids, if the pole's hollow. Um, so they actually do a, a bore sample, they drill into the wood, check condition of the wood. Um, and then where they bore, they put in a small, I think you guys asked last time what it was. It's borate that they put in, a little borate rod into the pole, and like I said, that, that dissolves into the wood, um, helps prevent wood rot. Um, and so that's what they do, and basically using that information, um, you know, they look at what the original circumference of that pole was, what the current circumference is, you know, the interior condition of wood, are there any, any voids, any softwood? And they calculate, uh, what the remaining strength of that pole is, what the remaining life is. So, um, anything below 67%, um, you know, is, is considered a reject, recommend for replace. Um, anything below 33% of original strength is a priority, um, to get done. So they, they rate that and, and give us information, and then we schedule those poles for replacement based on the calculated remaining life. Um, and just to kind of talk, you saw in that last, um, the last slide, you know, there, obviously, there's, there's gonna be several feet of a pole in the ground, depends on the height and all that, but, um, they obviously can't dig up the entire pole. Um, but what they do is, is check there. So what, what this is, this is not one of our poles, unfortunately, but this was something I got from a pole inspection document. And this is actually just a section of the pole that's buried in the ground. So you can see there. So you can see there on the left side, that's the ground line. That's where the pole's in contact with the ground and everything else there was buried. Obviously, a top section's gone, probably broke off by the condition. But you can really see it's that 18 inches, it's about six inches above the ground to 18 inches below the ground where all the decay really takes place. And that's, that's where, you know, the temperature's right, the oxygen content's right, the moisture's right, where you really get the wood rot and all deterioration below that. Really don't have to worry about it. So that's why they kind of check in that area. So a little bit about our system, you know, we've got a little over 57,000 wood poles. As of right now, we've inspected around 33% of our system, so almost 19,000 poles. And we're going to be going out to redo our, our contract fee service. We have a third party that does this, that's trained in this and does all those calculations. And we, you know, we refresh all of our proposals and services every few years and make sure we're getting the best prices and so on and so forth. And looking for any maybe new ways of doing things. So we're going to be doing that in 2025. And after we've awarded that, we're going to inspect another 5,500 poles this year. So that's what, that's what we have scheduled. So last year was our best year for poles replaced. We did about 356 of them in 2024, which brings our total to 1,476 poles replaced under this program, you know, that were evaluated. Unfortunately, we still have over 1,200 poles left to replace, you know. Found a, a lot that, that need detention, need replacement. And so like I said, we're, we are still kind of trailing a little bit, you know, in these years with, with the amount of poles need to be replaced. What we're targeting and what we budgeted for, for 2025 is, is 550 poles to replace. So trying to get even more done, you know, obviously even with that, with, with 1,200 poles, it's going to take us a few years to get caught up. But you'll, you'll see kind of this next slide, our map. We've started on the eastern side of the system where the infrastructure is kind of at the oldest and, and all typically all in the overhead, excuse me. And then we're working into the newer territory towards the west. So we obviously expect these numbers to go down as we go. And we'll have some time to catch up as we do the inspections and hopefully, like I said, try to keep as close as we can to that, that 10 years. But we are definitely really investing in this program. As Jeremy said, this is something really big on, this is kind of right behind tree trimming for us in terms of, you know, what we're doing to improve system reliability. So again, this is how we divided the, the area up. You can kind of see that the hashed areas are the ones that we've inspected and they have kind of a number of poles in the area. The 2022 number is actually broke up the, the two separate areas there. But that's there. We've done the 2023 inspection area there is we're, we're working. And then the 2025 inspection area we'll inspect this year, since it's 5,535 poles, is down there in the southeast corner of the county. And then we'll keep, you know, working from there. So that's how we divide it up and how we're going through it. And then like I said, again, we'll, once we're done with that, we'll start all the way over and, and go back through in the same, same way. So this is just a little, a little map. This is from our GIS system that, you know, we've heard, you know, Jerry and myself and other people talk about. And this is how we're tracking all the work for our crews. So you can kind of see just, I guess, a representation of the amount of poles we've done here in these areas. The green stars are poles that have been replaced. Blue ones are ones that are assigned in progress. And then the red and orange are ones that need to be replaced. The red are the priority ones and, and the orange are just, so that's kind of works. You can kind of see how we've been working through the system, replacing those poles. And kind of a little more zoomed in area where we're working. This is we've, we've kind of divided all the work up in the phases, makes it a little bit easier to assign crews and more efficient. You know, they're doing all the poles there in that one area and then moving on to the next. So that's kind of the breakdown. You can see, you know, the first part of this year, I've been working in the area kind of between 635 and 18th Street there and between state and parallel. So that's where our efforts are kind of focused right now. So I think that's about it for me. Was there, I went through that pretty fast. Any, any questions or anything I can back up to?
No questions. I just want to say technology is awesome.
That's great.
Good job. Keep it up.
Thank you.
I just have a couple of miscellaneous comments. First is the customer service, I'm sorry, the customer engagement committee met this week. Had a good meeting, looking forward to the rest of the year. Wanted to take a minute to thank Gabby for her presentation. And, you know, I, I know I sent an email out earlier in the week before the weather got too terrible. The electric ops guys had a pretty good challenge. They had a semi truck smash a, smash up a transmission pole down in Fairfax. So they jumped on that and, and really took care of that in some pretty cold weather. So I wanted to give them a little bit of kudos. But, and also, you know, the other night at the customer or the, the, yeah, community engagement meeting, I, I think it dawned on me sometimes, you know, the technology and our need for technology and Stevie just mentioned it. We kind of overlooked Rob Camp. Rob Camp puts in a lot of hours, as many as the rest of the team does. And, and sometimes he doesn't get much, you know, appreciation for that. So Rob, I appreciate that for sure because you're here quite a bit with everybody. And, and I know Jerry's supportive of everything you do. So thanks. And then last but not least, Lori. Lori's last meeting, some folks have, have already spoken to her. But I don't know, Lori, if you have anything you'd like to say. But I, I, I do want to take a minute to just, you know, recognize her for all she's done. I've known Lori for a lot of years and worked, worked in a lot of different capacities with her. And it's always been great. She's always been willing to help. You know, whether it be something here at BPU, something with some other initiative we're having in the community or, you know, doing the work we do on the pension board. So I, I, Lori, truly appreciate the, the mentorship you've given me and, and the willingness you always had to help me. So thank you for that. I don't know if you'd like to come up and I, you have some comments. I don't know how many of them are, are a fit for the meeting, but.
So thank you, Jeremy. You know, when people stand up here, you know, the thing I hear people talk about is about BPU's a family. And I can honestly say after 40 years, you know, BPU is my family. And, you know, I started working here when I was 25 years old. And the person who gave me the opportunity, Charlie Allstrom, you know, he not only gave me my job, but he gave me an opportunity to do multiple jobs within accounting and learn. And then that gave me the opportunity to move up to where I am today. And, you know, I thank him for that. And, you know, I did have an opportunity, you know, a few years back to be responsible for other areas that I had no idea I was going to be responsible for. And I do appreciate that because it gave me a broader knowledge of the utility. You know, my job is not just handling accounting and purchasing. You know, my job and responsibility is company-wide. And, you know, I have to, I deal with, you know, not just senior management or anything, but I deal with all people in the utility and I respect that. And, you know, sometimes they're not happy with what I have to say, but they've overall, you know, is a mutual respect. And, you know, I'm grateful for those relationships. And it takes all of us in order to be successful. And in my role as CFO for about 24 years, you know, I've stood before you as the board and boards before you. And I've, you know, had to have, bring some bad news, you know, that hadn't been always fun standing up here. And I remember a time when I stood up here and told the board, you know, we have 17 days of cash on hand and we were using our reserves in order to pay the bills. And that was not a fun time at all. But, you know, as a utility, we all worked together, you know, to come out of that. And, you know, we've made great progress over the years. And, you know, I'm proud to where we're at today. And I know there's also good things ahead. And so I feel good about, you know, passing the torch on and, uh, don't screw it up, Andrew. But, you know, I've valued my time here. And one thing that I'm, you know, proud of, you know, financial people probably don't get many awards or whatever. And, but I think about, you know, our, our run of, you know, receiving the GFOA award, the Government Finance Officers Award, you know, for 43 straight years. And I'm, I'm proud of that. I'm proud that I have been a part of that for, you know, most of those years. And, you know, I think that's, that just gives us a third party to say, yes, you're doing the right things and everything. So I'm, you know, proud of that achievement from, for my area. I appreciate the board, you know, listening to me stand up here month after month. And, you know, when I've presented to you and previous boards, I've presented over 300 times to the board. And, you know, I'm still not probably very good at it, but I still am proud of that number that I've been up here. So, you know, I appreciate your, your patience with me, you know, telling you financial information. And it's not always easy. There's a lot to it. But I appreciate, you know, everything that you've given me the opportunity to do. And I appreciate what the utility has given me an opportunity. I've had a great career and, you know, I never thought I would be at a place for 40 years. Never thought I would be here for 40 years. It just sounds like an awful number, but, you know, I'm, I'm proud of that. And, you know, I've, I'm grateful for the opportunity that the utility's given me. So I look forward to what's ahead of me. And, you know, I appreciate everything that BP has done for me. Thank you.
Well, thank you again, Lori. Public comments on agenda items. Is there anybody? No, Rob? Back over to you, Madam Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. Ash. We will go into board comments. And President Haley, if you'd like to offer your comments tonight first, sir?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. And I thank the board and the meeting for the indulgence on today. We're wrapping up here in Topeka. Want to again echo what we said or started to say earlier. Much appreciation to Lori Austin and for her diligence, her insight, her professionalism, and wishing her again all the very best in a well-earned retirement. Our facility, our utility is a prouder, better place because of her diligence. So again, just to echo that again, thank you. Thank you for that presentation that said that we're still ahead, that we're doing well financially as, as our final as well. Also for the pole replacement update, appreciate that. Have an ongoing concern. Sometimes I look at those poles and I have a better understanding, as I think we all do, for those that might be eligible for replacement. I certainly urge everyone to call them in, look at the number on the pole that's there, that's available, and to call in to the service number, as I do several times myself. And beyond that, I did share with the board and everyone regarding the opens, records or open meetings that did pass, the Senate, Senate Bill 70, that will allow us, if nothing else, to not give a specific time for going in and out of executive session. And also will clarify what electronic participation can be done by way of participating and voting in executive session. And affirm that law in the event there is some future need. That's in Senate Bill 70. It has passed the Senate and I hope it will the House. We also are hearing about some starbot activities as it pertains to certain centers, specifically large economic development centers here and how it might impact us in our particular district through tax abatements as well in Wyandotte County and across the state. Again, thank you, Madam Vice President, for conducting the meeting and so adroitly and expertly. I appreciate that and see you all very soon. Hope everyone keeps warm.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Wakes?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I echo the same sentiments given by Senator Haley regarding the presentations by Doug McDou and Lori Austin. We really are going to miss you. The way in which you were able to take financial data and look it off those pages and provide, make it, make it make sense for all of us. And then really help us to understand ways in which, to, to better understand those financials was, was awesome. And then the time that you took me by the side and explained everything to me one-on-one. I really appreciate that so much. Really shows your, your heart for the utility and that we're going to really miss. I think Andrew understands he has big shoes to fill. So we appreciate you both taking the time to do that. I want to also express my gratitude to my fellow board members for reminding me about the photo shoot today that I was not able to attend and I asked them to use my previous photo for that. But I'm really excited about what the utility is doing and really thank, thank you again, Madam Vice President.
Thank you. Mr. Parker?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Appreciate the presentation, Darren. That was, it's just always helpful, especially as newer board members to just learn about all the great ongoing work that happens here. And Lori, just echo everything else. I've appreciated in my year on the board, all of your insights and being willing to share information and answer questions you've probably answered many times over your career. But more importantly, just appreciate all the service that, you know, came leading up to this year too and helping to steer the ship and put us in, in good financial standing. And I, I hope that you're ready to enjoy some relaxation and whatever else is on the retirement agenda. And we all wish you well in that.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Mrs. Gonzalez?
I too would like to echo Jeremy's thoughts for Rob. I appreciate all, all he does to help us all stay connected and live and remind us when we need to turn it down a notch. And Lori, I, I will miss you. I, I knew that I could always call your office and ask you something I didn't understand about the budget or something I didn't understand about the monthly report you were going to give. So I'm looking forward to Andrew being pretty open to all my questions, hopefully. And Darren, thank you for your presentation tonight. And that's all I've got. Stay warm.
Thank you. Mr. Roman?
I too just like to thank all the team members for their, their reports. It's always good to hear from you. I also want to thank Lori for her time in, in, in office or in, in her position. I think when I first came on the board was when you were down, we were down around 17 to 20 days of cash on hand. And, and I was shocked at, at that. And it's taken a, it's been a battle, but it's one that's been well worth it to get to where we are today. And I want to thank you for everything that you've done to get us from that point to where we are. I know it's not just you, it's the whole, it's, it's the whole organization that has worked hard and worked together to go from those dark days when we were, were having trouble making, paying bills to where we are today. And it's great to be where you're at, where you can walk out and leave, leave the utility in the position that we're in. So thank you very much for all that you've done over the years to get us into that, into that position. And I just want to thank all, all the team members for everything they do. The, the workers that are out tonight, working in this cold. the ones that are manning the, the, the computers like Rob, just everybody, you're all, it's a team. And it appears that right now we're in a position where everybody's working, working together. And and I think there's only going to, we're only going to see good things in the next year or two for the utility. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Groneman. Obviously echo some of the other comments of of the board tonight. But Darren, that is, the pole replacement project, you know, that is, that is a core of our electric system here at B P U. And the amount of focus that's put on it, the amount of preventative care that's put into this is really critical. And, you know, Jeremy kind of touched upon it at the beginning of the meeting, but, you know, sort of the more, the proactive approach to things, the more preventative maintenance that's done. You know, Don, what you guys are doing down at the plant right now, I mean, it's, it's, there's just a lot that goes into this. You know, we had the, the, the brief hiccup on the water side here a couple of weeks ago. Y'all sprung into action, less than forty eight hours, had that issue corrected. It just, you know, Tom, you just said it, you know, it it takes, you know, the enormity of a team with technical expertise to run a power and water company. And, you know, we get a chance to sort of sit every day with a ringside seat to watching some of you all work and making this thing work and delivering, you know, safe, reliable power and water at affordable rates to this community. And I just want to thank all of you for the collective effort for that. Lori, it's, it's hard to believe that it's been forty years. I mean, I, I think you, you just turned, you just turned fifty, did you, this year, last year? Just a little bit. But, you know, that, that kind of dedication to, you know, one, I, I can't imagine what that's like. And I know a lot of people at B P U have a similar experience, right? I'm glad that you felt like this place was a family to you and is a family to you. That is how a municipal utility should be. And, you know, you, you have been a big part of this utility for the, you know, tenure you've been here. You have earned a, a wonderful retirement. And I hope, but as some other board members said, that you actually get to kick your feet up a little bit and and maybe relax a little bit. I know that, you know, there are times when, you know, if, if you're not online, you're actually here in the building on the weekends and at night, you know, doing, doing things that are associated with this utility. And, you know, not everybody can see that. And again, I know we have a ringside seat to some of this. So thank you for your dedication to the utility and thank you for the dedication to the community. We really appreciate it. And congratulations on forty years. Last thing I want to touch upon is the, and Jeremy, you touched upon a little bit, the community engagement committee meeting we had Monday night. You know, Board Member Wakes suggested during that meeting that, you know, perhaps the community ambassadors that are a part of that committee would, would like a similar tour to what, you know, the board members get when we onboard as new board members to the utility. And we obviously view, you know, we, we go and take a tour of the plant, the power plant, we go and take a tour of the water treatment facility and do some of those things. And water guys, I don't know if you guys even know this yet, but your general manager has volunteered the water treatment facility to be, over the, the summer months, hopefully, when the weather's good, the, the days are longer, we got a little bit more light, to have one of our community engagement committee meetings there and have those folks be able to tour the facility. And, you know, we're, I don't want to say we're spoiled because I do believe that, that, that the B P U management team would probably allow tours to to others, but these folks are part of this, you know, community engagement committee. And I know they're excited about it. So just offering that kind of, you know, engagement with the community up is really, really important. Stevie, I appreciate you mentioning that the other night. And we look forward to, to coming onsite and and having a, having a meeting over there and and having another tour. And I think, I think that's all I had tonight, Mr. G M. So with that, I will entertain a motion for the executive session. Do you want me to? Yeah, it'd be great.
The proposed, proposed motion for adoption is as follows. I move that the board go into executive session while suspending the portion of Rule one point one that requires in-person attendance. And after taking a ten minute recess, we move into executive session in the first floor conference room to discuss confidential matters related to the general manager as justified under the personnel matters of a non-elected employee exception in the Kansas Open Meetings Act and that the general manager, Jeremy Ash, and Acting Chief Counsel, Angela Lawson, be present to participate in the discussion and that we reconvene an open session at seven twenty five in the boardroom to either take action in an open session or to adjourn.
Mrs. Rose, so moved.
Point of information, please.
Yes.
Point of information, yes. I didn't quite hear the inclusion that you referenced at the beginning, how that's worded.
We're, we've waived the rule so you can attend remotely.
All right. And will that be transferred over from this particular signal? That's, I guess that's a Rob Camp question.
Rob Camp will send you a link for it.
All right.
Camp has already sent you a link for it.
All right. I hope to join you there momentarily then.
Thank you, Rob.
Should this motion prevail, which I imagine it will.
Mrs. Rose, so moved. It's been moved and seconded, roll call, please.
Roll call, Haley.
Aye.
Wakes.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Groneman.
Aye.
That motion carries, the board will move into executive session after taking a ten minute recess.
I'll enter, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this evening.
I move, we adjourn. Wake second.
It has been moved and seconded, roll call, Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Gonzalez. Parker.
Aye.
Wakes.
Aye.
Groneman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
That, you have a quorum, that motion carries.